I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Elkhorn Common Council to order. Will you please rise? So I guess I'm supposed to read the date here, June 2nd, 2025 at 5:37. We please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Tim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Harvey.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr. is absent. Ron Dunwoodie.
Here.
Scott McLory.
Here.
Ken Minell.
Here.
Dan Roberts.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Would anyone like to be heard? Hang on a second. I'll read my little, read my little statement and then whoever would like to speak can come up to the podium and give your name and address and you get three minutes. Public comments are limited to three minutes each. The public may speak on any item of city concern, whether or not the topic is included on this agenda. However, if the topic does not pertain to an item listed on the council agenda, the council is not permitted to address or discuss the matter during this meeting. Under open meeting laws, the council must notice an item on the agenda to allow discussion on that matter. If council is not permitted to discuss your concerns, your comments will be considered and may be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. So who'd like to go first? Stephen, you want to go?
Hi, my name's Stephen Hewlett. I live at 203 West Davenport Street in Elkhorn, Wisconsin. I am probably one of the most easterly residents in the subdivision, close to what will be the meat and slaughterhouse packing plant. The last time we discussed this, I think I stated my concerns regarding stormwater, rainwater runoff, the treatment of wastewater from the facility, and the possibility of odor and other sort of issues like vermin and so on, which are possible, but you know, I don't want to deny Mr. Nederstein his right to expand his business, you know, don't want to be a NIMBY guy. Last year, we saw how Voss Road was impacted by traffic from the Highway 12 diversions and although there won't be a significant increase in traffic, it is going to be a lot of heavy goods traffic. And I'm wondering whether Voss Road is rated for those vehicles. I'm also wondering about the prospective size of the facility in terms of 40 to 50 head of cattle, I think is the number in the paperwork from the city, and how that would impact in terms of traffic. I think 50 is the lower limit, sorry, for whether setbacks required for certain sizes of production facilities, but I haven't had time to research that unfortunately because Wisconsin statutes are hard to read for the layperson. And then finally, I think it's curious of positioning of the facility where it is as close to his neighbors on Voss Road. Setback provisions for residential properties on a city, city town road, I think it's called, are a certain distance and I am curious to know what the planning requirements are for the setback for the new buildings in a different municipality, if that makes any difference at all. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. We've got two items, the council meeting minutes from May 19th, 2025, and we've got a temporary Class B beer license for Walworth County Agricultural Society for monster trucks on July 19th, 2025, from 12:00 PM until 10:00 PM at 411 East Court Street. Can we put those, keep those together? Anyone object to that?
I'll make the motion to approve items A and B under the consent agenda.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is passed. Report of city officers, the mayor, I guess first of all, I'd like to welcome Rebecca back. Good to have you back. And I wanted to congratulate Amber on the fine job she did in Rebecca's absence, but I think she ran out on me. She snuck out, but maybe you can pass that along to her. Secondly, we've got to appoint members to an ad hoc committee for the restoration of the ban shell. Does everyone see the list of candidates? Should I read, do I need to read those out loud? Probably do, huh? Yep. Katie James, Sarah Whitkey, Scott Helverson, Jeff Sargent, Alicia Sargent, Bruce Lechner, and Aaron Gottschalk have been nominated for that. Be looking for a motion to approve those.
I make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Adam, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted, also wanted to thank Amber Schelman, our deputy city clerk, for filling in while Rebecca was out of the office. You know, Amber, you know, just came to the city in, in first part of the year, so would have to come in and immediately step in for a position that involves a lot, deals with a lot, obviously with an election there too. You know, Amber, Amber did a great job and handled a lot of pressure and, and always, you know, seemed to be in good spirits. So thank you to Amber. But at the same time, we're also thrilled to have Rebecca back as well. So thank you, Rebecca, for coming back. Just as, as far as the ban shell goes, there's going to be a presentation on that at the next council meeting to talk about grant opportunities for the ban shell restoration, to talk about sort of a potential vision for how that restoration process could happen. So just wanted to let you know that that'll be on the next agenda. And tomorrow, just a reminder, is the John T. Geese Day, which I know you guys recognized at the last council meeting or declared that, proclaimed that. Rebecca, do you have an update on that?
Yes. Amber ordered the flower arrangement, so it'll be here at City Hall tomorrow morning.
So we'll do that, as well as post some notices on our social media page and website. And so anyway, I know you guys wanted to make that public, so that is happening. And then just wanted to just reiterate that we're pretty close to getting a development agreement finalized for Harvest Point Condos Villas, which will be up by Walgreens. So I know our city attorney has been back and forth with council for Belinsky Homes, but I think we should be ready the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, so. And I know Belinsky's ready to go on that project. And we did get a refund for additional money for our trash collection fees that we're, we contend were overbilled for the city back in 2023, so that was good. And just as FYI, I do apologize. I know my memo talked about a schedule for the budget and the schedule didn't actually make it in the packet. So I do have hard copies of that, which I can give to you either now or later, so.
You can just send it to us by email.
I'll send it to you by email. All right. So do apologize for that if you're looking for it. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Adam. We'll move on to unfinished business. We've got decision regarding water treaty, water testing of wells at Centralia Water Treatment Plant and the rehab of the Centralia Water Treatment Plant Reservoir. We've got some engineering quotes. Who would like to start with that? Nate? Yep. Hear it up.
Good evening, everyone. So for the course, the last couple of weeks, we've been busy working with KLM and Dixon to receive quotes for rehabbing the reservoir downtown that is needed. They've been gracious enough to present us some estimates and some costs. I will preface this. I got a curveball 45 minutes ago. I'm sorry, this seems to be a theme, but contractor called me up 4:15 this afternoon and had to amend their proposal here. So I'll discuss that here, here briefly. So Dixon came in at $111,650 for construction services, plans, bids, all that, to get the reservoir back online, new roof, rehab, new coatings, all that good stuff. KLM previously was $90,000, $94,500 for the same type of thing. So there's about $30,000 difference. They called me this afternoon and realized they made a mistake. They didn't include the $10,000 in engineering fees to construct, like to put up a plan for the roof. So basically, you would take the roof off, build it to a planned set. And they can, in order for them, for them to do it, they could expedite this whole process. Because like the biggest picture of this, you guys, is Lakeland's coming, Lakeland work is coming, that plant's going to go offline. We need to provide water, so we're going to need the downtown plant online. So only way to do this is to take the roof off, build a new roof, put it back on, rehabilitate it. So I know, my recommendation was to approve spending up to $20,000 originally to have KLM engineering to start drafting a plan specifications and a bid package. Unfortunately, I'll have to amend that to $30,000 because they forgot about the $10,000 engineering for the roof. They say they just found that out at 4:15 this afternoon. I brought down, break down on the prices, kind of what everything kind of covers in there. If you have any questions about the pricing breakdown or anything like that, I'm all open to it. But there's a couple other things still to kind of touch base on about, about the Centralia plant. And that is, I know you're interested in the testing materials. Unfortunately, the manufacturers under, the vendors in, and their accounting department, they can't get our information straight, so they haven't shipped out the sample containers. As of, we'll say, 4:20 this afternoon, we retouch base with them and they should be coming this week. So hopefully we'll have results here.
If they don't come this week, do we have a backup plant or factory that we can get them from?
It's very, very difficult. This is the only place that we were able to find, I'd hate to say almost across the country, unfortunately. We've reached out down to as far as Nevada, Ohio, in state. This is our best shot, so.
Hopefully, hopefully they're coming this week then.
I sure hope so, sir. I sure hope so. I'm, I'm frustrated as well. Also, just a kind of corporate part of the work that has to happen at downtown is the aerator work. So as was suggested last time, to exhaust all avenues. So we're in the process of doing that. A new aerator costs approximately $200,000. I have a quote for materials that are about $42,000. That doesn't include labor startup or anything like that. I'm also investigating the avenue to rehab it ourselves, use our own staff and do it. And I think that's, might be a very viable option, but we're still doing that. And that's kind of part of these ancillary items that we got to take care of, such as skate integration, engineering, the aerator, site work, tank cleaning. The cathode protection may or may not be taken care of through the coatings, through the coatings. And one other thing, just so you guys are aware, I think it's only fair to you guys as a council to know, I don't want you to sit there and think like, hey, if we stick in 1.4, $2 million into the reservoir, everything's 100% kosher, we're good for the next 25 years. That's not necessarily the case. It will get us through to what we need to do. But somewhere within, I would say, two to four years, we're going to have to start working on rehabilitating the filters, the softeners, solenoid panels, valve replacements, electrical upgrades, skater upgrades, brine maker upgrades, booster pump replacement, some process piping and mechanicals. I just want you to be aware that that's on the horizon. I don't want you to sit there thinking like, hopefully this approved this, like, and then we're good for 25 years. Unfortunately, that place has not been maintained for quite some time. I just want you guys to be aware of those issues that are coming down the pipeline, so you're not surprised about 18 months or two years or whatever the case may be. So I guess, long story short, what I'm asking you guys to do is approve us to use KLM to draft plan specs and a bid package to get this process going. Because if we don't get this going relatively soon, and honestly, within the next few days, trying to get this thing online by October will be almost impossible. So that's where I'm at.
Nate?
Yes, sir.
So when you talk about a couple of years from now, we're going to have to start rehabbing the, the Centralia plant.
Correct.
By then Lakeland will be back up and running.
Yes, yes.
In, in good shape.
Yep.
The Northeast Plant will be working.
Yep.
So we'll be able to shut Centralia down while that works being done.
Right. Well, and the neat thing about the Centralia plant is it's, it's built in a way where you can rehab half the plant and keep the half the plant running. But also we will have the capacity at Lakeland. And it's even possible by that point in time, we'd have well 10 available at the Northeast Treatment Plant. So capacity shouldn't be an issue. No, we would not be in the position that we are in today, if that's what you're trying to get at.
So, so for tonight, you're looking for authorization not to exceed 30,000?
Correct. So you get KLM to draft a plan specs, bid package, to get that going, so I can start conversations with the DNR, so I get KLM down here and we can just get the ball rolling. So hopefully we can get this thing out to bid aggressively mid-August and get this completed hopefully by mid-October. That's plan A. Plan B, I'll be upfront. Plan B is if I can't get this 100% completed by October 15th, I want to be able to work with the DNR at a bare minimum to get the roof replaced and at least get one set of coatings on there so we can at least utilize this while Lakeland is offline. And then unfortunately, the contractor will have to come back and finish up the coatings next spring or summer when Lakeland's finished. But that's plan B.
I'll make that motion. Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion?
My only discussion is the reason I was not able to attend the LNR meeting was because Nate and I were discussing how to deal with the response for the last minute change from the contractor. So I apologize for that LNR meeting.
Thank you.
So this is just to rehab what we have?
Correct.
So we're not looking at building new, just rehab?
No, it's almost $2 million to build a new one. This is a steel structure. I've had a couple of different contractors come in and they're pretty confident in the sidewalls and everything like that. And they'll come in, they'll take steel measurements and verify all that. But I mean, I can't imagine why steel can't last 100 years. So I mean, we're maybe at the midlife of that right now. So a new roof, aerator rehab, I think we're in good shape for at least another 2025, if not more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Scott McLory.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. New business. First item is we've got discussion of possible decision regarding preparing a resolution, taking a position in support or opposition to proposed construction of a meat market and slaughterhouse at N 5531 Voss Road in the town of Sugar Creek. Ken, you want to?
Yeah. I would, I would make a motion, preparing a resolution in opposition of the meat market slaughterhouse at North 5531 Voss Road in the town of Sugar Creek.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I guess, yeah. I think the people that are opposed to this have never really been around, at, seen, worked at, lived next to a modern facility. I have for years. Most of what they're afraid of isn't really what's going to happen. They already, the people on, on Voss Road already live across the street from a farm with cattle. I don't know what his restrictions are for how many head of cattle he has. I know at one point in time, there was probably close to 50 head of cattle on that farm, which I, I don't think, I don't think anything is going to change except for there's going to be a new building across the street. The, you're not going to get any more, more smell from this, from this facility. And all they, they, the newer ones don't, they don't put off a big odor. There isn't a lot going on there. I worked for about five years in a processing plant and I lived right next door to it. And occasionally, you would get a smell. They don't allow those kind of things anymore. Everything has to be taken care of. So I just think, I just think everybody wants to make more out of what it is than what it really is. It's a new business just outside of the edges of Elkhorn or right on the edge of Elkhorn. It's going to bring more into the community, more jobs, more opportunities. I just, I'm personally, I'm for it. So I don't know what else to say.
I don't, I'm, I'm not against what he wants to do. The location is not right for what he wants to put there. Okay? We're looking at 40 more homes coming in right across the street, right at the entrance right of that.
Right on the corner, on the opposite corner.
The future, the, that area right there is residential. So do we surround a slaughterhouse with residential? He's got a lot of land, you know, maybe he should put it somewhere else on the property.
So that's a possibility. Have to discuss with him. But I, I, me personally, I don't, I mean, it's not any different having the grocery store on the other side of, of all of them houses. So you, you do have businesses right on the other side. They're just as active, just as busy, semi-trucks coming and going. I, I don't, I don't feel that there's going to be a huge difference in, in the two.
I guess my question is, why would the city take a position, either pro or con, against this project when it's in the township of Sugar Creek and the county within their purviews to make those decisions? Am I right? I mean, it's not like if we voted it down, it's going to make a difference. It's not a city project. Am I correct? So I guess I'm not really sure why we'd want to take a stance either way.
You're correct, and it's not, it is not a.
Yeah, I would just add to that. Elaine, you know, articulated, right now we have an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Sugar Creek to split the cost of maintaining that Voss Road segment. So if, to the extent that there's additional traffic, both from heavy trucks, but also increased vehicle traffic from, from people, you know, going to the meat market, the, the city's now on the hook for that. It's likely the city's going to be asked to be, provide power for this, this facility because it's not served by We Energies. And We Energies has said that they're not going to provide electricity, at least as far as we know. So that impacts us. You know, the, the city does exercise extraterritorial zoning, the three out of our four jurisdictions. So it's not, you know, outside the realm of, of, you know, for the city to be concerned about what development's happening in the area, especially when there, there was, you know, we just got a proposal for a new housing development right across the street. So there's, you know, a multitude of reasons why the council might want to take a position. But, and then we've gotten, you know, concerns from residents on Voss Road who are concerned about the project. So that's why we just, staff is looking for guidance from you on whether you want us to, you know, if you, if you want to take a public stand on it, this is the opportunity. So.
I guess I've got a question. Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot here. We've got a facility right, right in town on South Wisconsin. Do we get, do we get complaints from, about Wilson Farms?
In regards to?
You know, noise, smell, traffic?
Not that I'm aware of. Obviously, some of those may go to zoning as well if they're in regards to odor or, or noise necessarily, not necessarily to the police department. But I'm not familiar with anything off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to weigh in? So the, to review, Ken, the motion was to?
Oppose.
To have a referendum, not a referendum, but a?
Resolution.
A resolution.
Yes.
Opposing.
Right, from the council.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
And that's all they're doing, saying the council either supports it, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, or is not supportive of it.
Yeah, and just, just for clarification too, I mean, the resolution would have to come back and actually be on the next council agenda for you to vote on. This is just whether you'd want us to even go down the road of drafting a proposed resolution, either in opposition, opposed, or just no position at all.
And, and there would be, obviously.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McLory.
No.
Dan Roberts.
No.
The motion passes. Moving on, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed resolution number 25-17, a resolution amending section 7.10 for uniforms and safety apparel of the City of Elkhorn Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual.
I'd make the motion to approve resolution 25.
I think.
Sorry.
I don't actually have anything. I was just here if there are questions.
Well, we beat this up in committee.
We did beat this up in committee. That's why I'll make the motion to approve the resolution 25.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding proposed resolution number 25-18, a resolution amending City of Elkhorn Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, section 2.12 for electronic communications to incorporate a social media policy. Everyone get to see this in their packet.
I make a motion to approve 25-18.
This one, I'm sorry, I do have some comment.
You got to wait till we second it.
Don't worry. Okay.
Go ahead, I'm just kidding.
Um, we had sent this to Elaine's firm to review. They did send some edits primarily around if we are no longer wanting to allow the public to comment on our social media pages. Currently, we do, or we leave it up to the discretion of the department. I know some departments do, some don't. So that is the only change, and that's what we would like, just the council to be aware of and your feedback on that. If you would like my opinion, I would, and I'll refer to Elaine if you think otherwise, but I, we haven't but we haven't had an issue currently with public comment. I think it can be beneficial for some departments, such as our recreation department, just getting programs out there, sharing that information. If we have something going on in utilities, and maybe there's an electrical issue or water issue, just making sure that, you know, residents are sharing that information, because that's the purpose of why we're posting on social media, is we do want our residents to know and share that information, albeit our police department, I know if there's, you know, a subject matter that's sensitive, perhaps we don't want to have comments shared on that, so I have noticed our police department will turn the comments off in those cases. So I personally would think it could be up to the discretion of the department, depending on the topic, but again, I'll let you discuss. And Elaine, I don't know if you wanted to touch on that at all?
So the latest edits will allow or not allow the pub...
Not.
Not allow them to comment?
Correct.
And all of our forums?
Yes.
I'm not a big fan of that. I'm not, but I understand Elaine's point. I know when we talked about it at the committee level, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the First Amendment rights and the rights to speak your mind, within certain parameters, of course, you know, not that they're swearing or whatever, but simply saying that X department didn't handle this as well as I would have liked them to, that is their right. So I guess I'm kind of torn about having an absolute, you know, they can't comment at all.
Right.
I know the sheriff's office in Walworth County, I think almost exclusively has, comments have been disabled on almost every post. I don't think there's any that they leave you the option. You can either thumbs up, thumbs down, that's it. But obviously, you know, the police department's a completely different animal, depending on the case, so I don't know. What do you all want to do?
I have no problem. You know, as long as it maybe has a disclaimer on it, comments will not, will be removed if they're obscene or threatening, obviously, it's the common sense things that you shouldn't be doing anyhow, but leave it up to the departments.
Okay. Each department has a moderator for their own site, right? And wouldn't that person then be the one you would, if they had some kind of rule to follow, to what's acceptable on their site and what's not acceptable on their site? If we had to, if they each had to write something, that's something that may have to happen, but, you know, most sites like this are, have a moderator, someone who's watching it and making sure that things that are being said are appropriate or not appropriate, and they delete them when they're not appropriate, or they disable the comment from that person when there's something that they're doing that isn't right. So I would think that we would want to follow in the same form, let the departments take care of their sites, just make sure they follow a basic guideline. Does that make sense?
And I think the original proposal we had from CIVMAC had, it specified that the circumstances in which something would be regulated, it was obscene language, threatening, so there were those guidelines that were going to be implemented under the original version, yeah. So we would, should you want to sort of undo the changes that were suggested, those limitations would go back in there, so.
And that is what came out of committee, was to allow the public the right to comment, as long as it wasn't, you know, threatening or obscene or graphic images or whatever.
Right.
That's what we recommended, to come back to the full council.
So I guess I'd go back to that as our posture.
I'd agree.
Is that your motion, Scott?
Sure.
And I'll second.
So we've got a motion and a second to go back to the original version?
Well, Tim also had a few other changes.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll, I'm on my second.
All right, is everyone clear? We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed engagement agreement with the law firm of Boardman Clark to provide legal counsel to the city regarding electric utility matters, including electric service extension issues. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm, what's the backstory? Obviously, this came up because of some reason or some issue or what? I don't understand.
I can take that.
Thank you.
When, a while ago...
Okay.
So when I learned that you had... And while it's certainly an area that our firm could learn...
And I appreciate that backstory helps a lot. Question about when we've engaged with them to provide legal counsel, is there an immediate cost involved to be on retainer for them? Is it by the hour when we need them? If we don't need them, doesn't it cost anything?
Nope, it's by the hour.
Okay.
So there's no retainer, and probably a lot of the questions we may have.
Well, they're just, they're just there ad hoc as we, if we don't need them, this year doesn't cost us anything.
Exactly.
But if we need them, they're a phone call away.
Exactly.
I think that's a great idea.
Does this pertain to the water utility also, if we had some legal questions?
It was, you're engaging...
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is this roll call?
No, just all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've got a discussion of possible decision regarding request from the electric department to declare a 2007 Skylift Mini D 33+ HD track drive as surplus property and utilize the services of Wisconsin Surplus Online Auction with a reserve bid of $30,000. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding the request from the electric department to purchase a backlot machine from Global for $170,825, and a trailer from I-95 for I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's second? Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ron Dun, sorry, Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McClory?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got discussion of possible decision regarding the request from the Public Works Department to accept a quote from BK Property Management for contract services to replace brick pavers downtown at multiple locations at a cost of $20,650. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Matt, do you want to give us some background on this?
Not really. I did provide a memo that's in the packet where I list the locations. These are areas that warrant brick replacement, just because of trip hazards, knowing that DOT will be coming through possibly in '29 or '30, these areas probably would be replaced at that time, but I think these are areas that we need to address sooner than later, so that's all I would add.
Your memo said that instead of doing stamped concrete, we're doing pavers again to match the rest of it, wasn't that?
Yeah.
Nice work on getting that done. I think that'll be nice for the downtown.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I would just add is just to say that, again, Public Works has been making a focus on trying to fix those pavers downtown, as well as doing some other improvements downtown, so thanks to Public Works on that. Just one FYI, is there's that kind of the corner area that's in pretty rough shape too, that this wouldn't be part of that, and partly because we're still trying to figure out what should go there, so there'll probably be one last kind of phase of trying to fix those downtown pavers, but this should take care of what you think happened with them, Matt, or at least?
I would say so. I mean, the steps, I call them carriage blocks. There's 31 of them. I'm looking to address 10 of them this year, possibly more, depending on budget later. But yeah, I think it would take care, I'd say the major corners, the big ones, yeah, so.
So the only area it wouldn't take care of is kind of right there across the street from Moyes, kind of on the corner there, where they sometimes have group gatherings and stuff, so that's the one area we haven't yet addressed, but would like to, although it's gonna be part of, probably a bigger conversation with the chamber as well, so.
All right, any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McClory?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes. Motion passes. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.